All right, so it is just after six on Thursday, August 4th, and we call the regular select board meeting to order. First item is set adjust agenda. I have one thing, we already have an executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313 to discuss personnel matters. We actually need two of those, so we're just gonna have, we're just gonna run them back to back there and...
Do you need a motion?
Uh, well, depends, what else do we have?
Any other?
Are there any other changes? Does anybody need to, sorry, Liz? I got you penned in. Any other changes, additions, deletions, especially deletions?
Please, deletions.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we have a second executive session at the end. Next is communication from the audience, is anybody here to discuss something with the board that's not on our agenda? Bethany?
No, I just said aye.
Aye.
I'm here with downtown.
Okay, great. Next, select board to approve minutes from last time, which was July the 21st.
I can motion to approve those minutes as written.
Second?
Any discussion changes? I thought they were good.
Nope, great.
All right, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And that goes that way. Next is town manager report given by David Upson, who is here with us.
Well, we were just up at the Creamery Road for the composting kickoff meetings, which was well attended.
Great.
Yep, so that should air on the local television station after being edited, hopefully.
So one of the composting...
They got carried away again.
Not every day you have a compost tasty.
Right. All right, so...
It's a good thing, too.
I'll start with, you know, we, somebody gave us some money, so we received $2,650 in the national opioid settlement that we opted in last year. So they're starting to divvy out those payments. We didn't get as much as some of the bigger cities, but we got something.
And Opi, just a question, that just goes to the PD, right, it's just like...
No, it just goes, I believe it just goes into to the town.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, it's not associated with the police department.
So we can basically like put it in the general fund or put it...
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, we don't go out and spend it on heroin.
Right.
Yep. So I have been looking into, so this is kinda in response to the boil water notice. I know that was kind of a big deal for a lot of people. I had been looking into townwide messaging systems to invest in, it's like instant notification systems. The most recent demo that I looked into was about $6,000, I got a quote for it, it was about $6,000 a year, which is, that's with a 5% increase each year with a $29,000 upfront fee. A town our size isn't really big enough to sustain this and we're not gonna be putting out that much messaging. I mean, we would use it, but I just don't think that it's, it would be a good, a good bang for our buck.
So, I mean, what's expected of us as a town, you posted it on Front Porch Forum.
On the town website.
On the town website.
We put on the radio station.
On the radio station, I mean, what more?
Well, in this day and age, Danny, people want information immediately.
Well, yeah, I want things, yes, I agree with you, but...
So there are...
You gotta be practical in what we're trying to do.
There's technology out there. We, so as I'm looking into this, one was put in place a few years ago. On our town website, there's a instant notification button and people have to sign up for it. And we had like 30 people sign up for it. So I think, once I figure out how that works and maybe send out a couple of test notifications, we can really, and that's through, just through Google.
Oh, perfect. So it's just a, like a list of...
Right.
Yeah.
So, but people need to sign, like, we need people's information.
People, you need to push them to the website to sign up.
The problem you're gonna have is people that are complaining, they're not gonna be the people to sign up, so...
I'm more concerned about the, there's a couple of businesses that didn't get called and that...
Well, I have no problem doing something like...
We need to notify certain people because...
Certainly the people that want to be notified.
Yeah, and we can contact them and say, hey, this is, this is what we're willing to do and this is how we're gonna notify you. So I just wanna get it out there that we are working on something to notify people faster so they're not having to tune into the radio or wander by the post office. I want something that we get out there.
I agree, my Facebook post that I put up.
Right.
Is this investment, this $6,000 investment, would that be something like a robo-call, like the way the school does it, basically like...
It'd be that, not only that, but...
Like, would it go to everybody in town, no matter if they signed up or not, basically?
No, you still have to sign up for it. So, so basically, this is something that would be on like the backend of our website. So you go to the town website and it immediately, you know, you go to certain websites, it immediately pops up. Sign up for newsletters or this would be sign up for for all notifications. And you'd either, you'd get like a text message or you can get an email. It's not really a phone call, so that, you know...
But you're saying we already have that tool.
But we may already have something that'll work.
We already have something in the works.
Which used to do work.
Perfect.
I could see it being really useful in the winter for the, like, winter plowing or like bands or whatever, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Although right now, it's signing up for water, wastewater.
Maybe there's a way to partner with the electric department, like if there's a power outage or something, like depending on what they use to contact people, like...
They don't contact anybody.
But maybe they would want to...
Everybody contacts them.
Because they have the contact info for everybody, I mean...
True, yeah.
They just might be, they might be interested in partnering in something like it.
I would hope so, yeah, that's a good idea. So then, Matt Krajewski from NEMC, our assessor, had a conversation and our townwide reappraisal, grantless reappraisal is scheduled for 2025. This is gonna be mandated by the state if we reach a certain threshold with our grant list. Our current assessors, which is New England Municipal Consultants, have spaced schedules for a year early, 2024. I believe Casey had mentioned it was about, I think it was 120, 120 to 140,000 that we got a quote for.
Don't we get some help from the state for that? For paying for that, or am I dreaming?
Why would we do it a year earlier, Tommy? This is a time sensitive type of thing.
Because, so, because it's, right now, I believe our, our current common level of appraisal is about 88% of...
Eight-six.
Eight-six and they only allow 88 and a half or something like that, we're close.
When you get to 85, when you drop below 85, then the state mandates that you do it, like, right now. So they're backed up, so the idea is, let's try to get on the schedule, get ahead of it a bit.
So the question is, is, it is, it's a large expense.
Don't we set aside money?
We do.
Oh, okay.
We do. So I'm asking if we should be putting this out to bid, like requesting a proposal. This would be outside of the scope that we currently contract with them. It's recommended by the state, I don't know.
I think we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
I think we've gone up to bid on it.
That's like the best practice to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll get that going on that, so really, if we get a lower bid come in, it could, we could be pushing that out to 2025 or further out, which might be a problem with the state, so there's...
I think it'd be fair to have to have the same timeframe, right, the bid, right?
Or, or maybe the timeframe is just a factor like the prices.
Those two years, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when can you do it and how much?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know, and then there were other factors last time, too. I don't remember exactly what they were, but there were other things that we considered. It does, it was 2016.
You've been doing this too long.
Yes.
Me, too. And then the next thing is...
We born to a UL.
Can, can you, what'd you say?
I said, "We born to a UL." We're still here.
Can the board authorize me to sign a contract to Northeast Kingdom Community Broadband related to the dispersment of the town ARPA funds for the investment in their fiber to home project? It's a, a large amount of money. I reviewed the contract, several other towns have reviewed the contract, it's been vetted. And then, so I just want your blessing to, because we committed those ARPA funds, I want your blessing to be able to sign that contract.
Do we need to have that be an agenda item, or is it...
No, it's, here we, here we are, we're just gonna roll with it, so it's...
My only question is, in our report on ARPA fund distribution, that's still gonna be okay? You know what I'm saying? Timeframe wise for the funds?
That they're requesting, yes. The timeframe's fine, yeah. And you mean, in order to...
Because we've only got half of it now, so like signing the contract, we said we wanted to save it because we're already...
I think the second round of ARPA funds is about to be dispersed.
Make a motion that we authorize Opi to sign the NDK Community Broadband Contract for ARPA Fund Distribution.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, and then a couple of public service announcements. I'm gonna keep these to a minimum, I could go all day long with public service announcements. Crossing near the diner, we gotta stop doing that, and if you see people doing that, crossing the road near the...
At the crosswalk?
No.
Oh.
No, they're crossing, they're crossing right at the intersection. It's very dangerous. And I've taken phone calls and it's not only people just visiting Hardwick, it's also local folks. So try to change your habit, because you're gonna get smoked. There's, cars come up around that corner pretty fast. And it happened actually on the other side of the road last one, last fall. When it gets darker, it's hard to see people. Trash receptacles on Main Street. So there's been a request to put more trash receptacles on Main Street. I say we don't put trash more. We're gonna try to increase the frequency on Thursdays or Fridays, removing that trash because it's, the more trash receptacles we put out there, the more people are gonna throw away their trash. Yeah, go ahead, I knew you'd, I knew you'd...
The deal with the trash, since the only one in our, whatever overflow is, is one on my positive...
That, and that, I did a little investigation today, I concur.
So the thing on that, there is that the deal was that they were to change it out when it got full. That's why there is spare garbage bags in the bottom.
That's right, they were getting, I remember that, they were gonna change it out.
Have they not been positive planning to do that?
Okay.
No, they haven't.
I'll follow up with that, I didn't know that, thank you.
You didn't ask me.
I'm glad you're here. We talk about a lot of things. I can't, I can't keep everything straight.
And they may, they may have been changing it and noticing what the trash is not from, largely not from them, but it's like people clean out their cars and putting little bags of garbage in there.
Yeah, there's actually a couple of other businesses there that potentially are generating trash now.
So maybe they need to share that with them.
But that was a deal when it was brought there, that we left garbage bags in the bottom when it did get full, they would change it out on weekends.
Perfect, thank you. I went through all the trash receptacles today to see what was being thrown away. And the one up there was the fullest and there's bags that aren't associated with any town businesses. So people, take care of your own trash.
So can't get away from uninvestigated bugs?
And then cars, cars pulling out of the diner, going onto Main Street, that's a one-way, folks, stop doing it.
A little more signage, we could always use some more signage.
Just stop doing it.
There's a billboard law on this state.
Next year, could we paint, could we paint arrows on that?
I was thinking of putting up one-way spikes, so if you drive... Okay, so the last thing, this is the most important thing, and then I'm done, okay? Then I'm done, I do have one more thing, but we need a cemetery sexton at the Sandborne Cemetery.
What are the duties?
Just...
What does that entail?
Coordinating, making sure that all the plots are organized, people that contact you, if you need to meet them at the cemetery, coordinating burials, and just kind of being a steward of the cemetery.
Does it pay anything?
I don't believe it does.
Sandborne is East Hardwick?
Montgomery Road.
Montgomery Road.
Yeah, Ed Keen.
Yep.
Ed Keen used to be this.
But Casey has more info about that, right?
Yeah, anybody that is, wants to do this, they can come and talk to us and...
I always think it's...
It'd be a good gig.
If somebody in East Hardwick would like to do that.
Right, yeah.
There are people who really enjoy keeping cemeteries up, so maybe somebody who...
Yeah, forward. Yep, so if I had a mic, I'd drop it now. Done. Next.
Next. Nominate David Upson.
Burial?
For a burial?
No burial?
I nominate, I nominate Town Tom Fadden for the road foreman report.
Oh, goodness lord. Sidewalks, of course, they've come to a halt this week, because we've been doing just about every other thing, I think, including the water leak, of course, everybody knows about and stuff, that was kind of a mess. If anybody wants to see what caused it, we have the part over at the down garage. I can't, I can somewhat blame it on our forefathers, but not really. There was actually three one-inch copper lines that fed into an old brass ball valve and that fed into the old line that fed that street at one point. So like typical stuff, I think, that we find, find in this town once in a while. Once they get done the brand-new line, they leave that one live, so that was a culprit down there. It actually, you know, it ate right through some of the threads and everything, so it's been leaking for quite a while. But I think with the vibration of the rolling down there and the paving and stuff, they finally brought it up to surface, so...
Where was it at?
Oh, you can see the new speed bump right at the very beginning of the street, right there, Cottage.
So Cottage Street and then across the street from there.
Yeah, did talk to the guy from Hutchins today, he said they will patch it in when they do paving up through for us. So that will be taken care of. We did, instead, I started our project this week on Bailey Hazen Road, strengthening that out. Larry was gracious enough to let us store the fill up at his house, because what we're gonna use it for is down around the corner, after we get it all done, we'll put that back down around through there and put some seed down on tour and stuff and let her go. Then we've got some big rocks, so we can block that section off, too, so that should take care of that. Hoping we can finish up this sidewalk here over the next couple of weeks, so weather permitting and guys are around enough and we don't have anything else major breaking down. One ton right now is down at the Ford Garage, has two bad ejectors in it. They had to go up and get it off Bailey Hazen Road up there for us. He drove it up there, then all of a sudden didn't start no more, so it's got two bad ejectors, so that's down at the Ford Garage getting fixed right now. We're kinda squeaking by with the excavator itself. That's got a small hydraulic leak on it, we finally got the part for that, hopefully we can get that fixed up, but we're keeping our eye on it, but she's, she's getting tired.
Is it scheduled for a replacement?
Well, that's supposed to be scheduled for replacement next year, along with the grader and loader, so three big pieces, yes. Been talking to dealers about it and stuff and they're looking at six to eight months out for actually getting stuff. I don't know if they're getting any better next year or not, because, well, we still can't replace the Ford F-550 yet, because there's none around and they're not opening up the bilge jack for the super duties, so we have no idea when that's gonna be opening back up, so we can replace that truck. We've been trying to grade in between every other project that we've been trying to get done and stuff. The guys did haul some stay mat up on Hopkins and some up on Bunker Hill. Crushing, we'll see. It was supposed to be here in May, June, and June, July, supposed to be here now, the middle of August, so we can get up a bit and get some gravel, so we're kinda behind on our roads right now. So it seems like everything's gonna be going balls there this, this fall for putting gravel down and stuff. Winter sand is done and over with. Took tires off the grader today, sent, we dropped those off down to Pete's Tire Barn, so hopefully they'll be done tomorrow. The front tires were pretty bad, Danny, see and see those, because we had one there. We took it down as far as we could, the wires, the wires were starting to throw, throw it, so we better get it done before it popped on us. The other stuff we got coming up, I still gotta do this front core system and we gotta replace the three-foot culvert on Hardwick Farms Road.
In the catch basin?
Yes, in the catch basin on the corner.
Sprinkler system where?
For the depot.
Depot, they're gonna do the outside work.
I gotta go pee off and go around, go down to the bottom.
Brush?
Oh, Woodbury, right? Not doing it.
Really? They, they backed out because...
Yep.
Because they don't want help with their...
Because they said their head, their head broke on their mower.
Yeah.
I, I probably don't know if it's...
Brand new!
But anyways, it, it is fixed and going again. So I don't, I don't know, Dan, so we'll, we've been at that one. I know Casey, I know we're supposed to be opening up bids here pretty soon, right?
We put them out.
And the other part there.
So what's that meant with Woodbury, though?
They called, they just called and asked if we could, if they could write us a check. If they could write us a check for last year's winner.
What about this year's winner?
I mean...
They're on their own?
I don't really wanna do that to them, but, I mean, we, we're gonna have to have that conversation.
Right, I mean, it is what it is.
Right, they can call out more.
Yeah, I mean, or we, we, you know, they write us a check and we know what the check's gonna be or something.
Right.
Not gonna do it for free anymore.
It's significantly less than what...
Well, they've had a, they had a really good deal for a long time.
Yeah.
To the point where they took advantage of it, so...
So maybe you and I need to go to the select board meeting.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, I just...
Because I know at the beginning, Dan, we were using them quite a bit. But I get to the point where our picks were and stuff like that, we were short narrow to the parts that we, where we were dumping, we didn't need all those trucks. You know, just to keep our guys going and busy.
It was, it was a good thing, but it's disappeared now, so we gotta figure something out, that's all.
Are they still helping haul sand, right?
Uh, no, no, no.
What?
We were gonna...
They were gonna, but it comes down to the same, same thing, Eric, is that, you know, when it's raining out, I want something for the guys to do. So that's one thing that we can do with our trucks, is haul back our sand.
It's not our obligation to use them, I mean, they're the ones that want us to plow, so they need to compensate us somehow in the way we want, not the way they want. It's fair, right, let's be fair about it, that's all.
So they were gonna, so that was Woodbury that had the, that was doing the mowing, the roadside?
They have a mower.
They were gonna do, they were gonna go out towards Macville and, because that would be shorter for them to come down and go out through. And then we got word that, or they got word that they were gonna pay us instead, and we were like, oh, well, why? You know, we made this deal downstairs, they even come with a mower, and then we got the word that their mower broke, so they were just gonna pay us. And then I was talking to one of the road crew out there and he said they got the mower all fixed and they've been doing it.
Said, "All right, no, it's not like dropping it."
They were waiting on a part.
Yep.
Whatever, let's just figure it out.
So yeah, it needs to be figured out at some point.
But we did put some roadside clearing out for bid.
Correct, we did get some bids.
We did.
Just one so far.
Yeah.
Just one, oh, that's not very bad.
Right, so that's, we got a guy then.
And my, just on that, not, I mean, I said I wasn't gonna say anything more, but that never happens. I just wanna make it clear to folks that if we do roadside clearing and we use like a brono head and grind the roadside, it's gonna look messy for a while.
Yeah.
And...
It's just the way it is.
So like...
Only for like a year, like the next year, it comes right back.
Right, paying a crew of guys to, with chainsaws, to go and clear and chip everything, we're not gonna get a lot of roads, like a lot of, you know, miles done.
I'll wipe some stuff.
So...
Bits are closed?
Like, I think, I think we need to, like Ward Hill, for example, is, needs to be done and it needs to be pushed back.
Well, Aggo Road is gonna get down to my house, in front of my house. Because I'm thinking of hitting my mirror.
All right, just don't leave any debris in the road.
There may be debris in the road, that's part of the deal.
I don't know where to send Mike.
Sit down in enforcement room, we could use it down there.
All right, all right, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
All right, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Uh, next up is a police department report, and we have Mike Henry.
I'll keep my shit.
That's good.
Concise. So we, we got rid of the 2017 cruiser.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Nicely done.
Facebook Marketplace, just that stuff works pretty good, all the other stuff wasn't, that worked pretty good. So we got pretty much what we wanted out of it, great, which is good. So we'll, I was going to start the process today to get the other cruiser, but it's been really busy all day. We, I have the policies pretty much all done. I don't know if I should be giving, I can give a copy, I have them all digitized so that I can forward them to the board if you'd like them, it's 421 pages of just awesome reading, if you're interested.
And won't they, won't we maybe put on the website eventually?
Uh, I wasn't gonna put them on the website.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to put them on the website, but...
Opi's looked at it, right?
I, yeah.
But you're...
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm trying to also put those, we have a training website that we use called Police One. I thought it was gonna be a lot easier to implement those in there so that I can assign certain policies. I'm finding it's a lot more cumbersome, I have to take each policy, put it into a PDF, download, you know, down, it's just, it's a long process. After two of them, I'm like, I'm not sure I wanna do this, but we'll, I'll see how that's gonna go. Also, the website, I don't know if anybody's looked at that, we're done with that. The Harvard Police website, if you get a chance, take a look at that.
And what's the address?
Uh, it's hooked right to our town website.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Awesome, I haven't seen that yet.
It's in there, a lot better, a lot more information, we've got downloadable forums on there for DMV, forums for us that are commonly asked for, we're doing our press releases on there.
Great.
The press releases are actually hooked to the Facebook page as well, once they're on there, so we'll try and... Paul Bernard is one of our, you know, fairly newer officers, he's great with that stuff, he's doing an awesome job.
Awesome.
Yeah. And I think the other stuff can probably wait till the, if you keep the memo, I think.
Item two.
What's that?
Item two on the agenda.
Item two on the agenda, I think we'll, we'll get to that.
And really quick question, and I just heard a couple of people at East Hardwick mention that there is somebody who's letting off a siren that sounds like an emergency vehicle, but it's coming, I think, from a residence, but there, I just, today, somebody was like in the village, they've heard this, like, it sounds like either an ambulance or like a police car, but it's not. It's like somebody setting off a siren, but you can hear it apparently in like the whole, just because the village is a whole. So I don't know if there's a way to like figure out...
Probably somebody would need to report it, I guess.
Yeah.
So just say, somebody report it, and then you guys will come?
Right, but, I mean, there's no law violation for that, so...
No, no, but it's just like, it apparently sounds like they, like an ambulance or something, like an emergency vehicle. So, yeah, there's not like a noise ordinance or anything like that, it's just kind of disturbing people because they think there's a fire or like there's something bad happening, but it's...
No, it's a car alarm going off, there's something bad, 5:45 in the morning, every morning, starting up towards one side way or whatever, it's like clockwork.
We did take the siren out of the old car, we got rid of it.
I have a sneaking suspicion that that will stop once school starts.
So I have seen that the cruiser down on Macville Road.
You would?
I have.
Are you complaining?
Very welcome sight, yeah, I complained the other night.
No, about the cruiser on Macville?
No, I'm not complaining.
No, he said some of them say.
I'm very happy it's there, if you could be there more, it's fine to me, but...
Will be. Just gotta call.
Lot of visibility, I called you the other night.
I know, I saw that.
Fourth of July fireworks are great, but just random fireworks throughout the week?
You're not into it?
No. I get up too early, work too hard, you know, just for shits and giggles on a Thursday night.
Yeah, well, I noticed a more visibility of the police, too, and it's appreciated.
Yeah, definitely seeing them around, seeing them out around the law, seeing them out doing highway stops, seeing them knocking on doors.
We knocked on a few doors today.
Yeah, no, you guys are doing a good job.
All right, all right, I'm gonna move us on. Item one is Heather Carrington of Carrington Community Development Services to give a presentation about the downtown commission progress. Community Development Services to give a presentation about the downtown commission progress.
Good evening, I am Heather Carrington, and I am gonna try to keep this very short. I sent you a ten-page memo, so I think that covers most of what you needed to know.
Yep.
But just for the audience who's watching, I am the consultant that was hired with a Vermont Municipal Planning Grant to assist the town of Hardwick to apply for a downtown designation for the Village of Hardwick, and that's through the Vermont Downtown Program. There's currently a designated village center, but applying for the downtown designation allows access to basically millions of dollars in incentives annually for any development that's going on in the downtown. So, that's the reason behind doing it. Um, the project is being led by a steering team made up of the Downtown Commission, and we do have Gary Michaels, Bethany Dunbar, Katie Tandy, and Sherry, your own Sherry Cornish, who is leading the Downtown Commission here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. So, the scope of work is really us defining the boundaries of the downtown designation, establishing an organizational structure, so that's the staffing model, the funding model, the board model, um, any committees, which I'm really hesitating on putting in there at this juncture, writing the bylaws, developing a five-year strategic plan, and completing the application document, which is a pretty big binder of documents. So, we should have all of that together by the end of December. So the purpose of me being here tonight is really to lay out for you the conceptual framework of where we are right now, to kind of check our assumptions and see, are we moving in the right direction? Are there things that we're missing? Um, are there things that you'd like to see changed or explored differently? Um, so I am going to do it at the very high level, fifteen-minute, I've crossed out a million things that I had in my notes level. Um, but fundamentally, we've completed some pretty extensive inventory and analysis at this point in time. So, key stakeholder interviews have been done, and that's with residents, business owners, property owners, town staff, nonprofit partners, a select board member, landlords, real estate developers, and I've also met and spoken with the planning commission, but that wasn't an interview per se. So, you know, there's been a lot of outreach to kind of get a sense from people about what the assets of the downtown are, what the challenges are with the downtown, and what the priorities are for the community for what needs to be done and the goals of this downtown organization. I also reviewed a 2016 business survey that Gary Michaels did. So, it's a little bit out of date, but it was an interview with thirty-two different business owners, and the findings were remarkably consistent with what I have been finding in my key stakeholder interviews. I did a site visit where I walked with Sherry parcel by parcel and kind of talked about all the projects that are going on in the Village of Hardwick, and some of the issues and concerns that have been raised in the community, some of the opportunities that are there. And through all of this, as well as through my review of the background planning documents, so your municipal plan, your regional plan, all kinds of demographics, there are several things that really came to the fore, and they are, there are quite a few projects that are already going on in the Village of Hardwick. So, we do not need to proliferate projects, what we need to do is double down and really bring resources to those projects to see those through to the finish. Uh, there's a concentration of town-owned parcels over ten acres, I think thirteen point seven five or something like that, that are within the downtown designation or immediately adjacent to what the boundaries were proposed to be. Um, so that's a real opportunity because that is town-owned property that can be leveraged, and that means that you can bring in some big incentives for some of the projects that you've been trying to get going. And, you know, as I was doing the research, I was speaking with Sherry about it, and you know, looked at, in particular, it was the Town Garage parcel, and said, my God, that's right next to the, we, the Moyle Valley Rail Trail, I'm sorry, I've designed a rail trail that was the Lehigh Valley Rail Trail, so I always say that. So, it, right next to the rail trail, some real opportunities, and was told in that conversation that actually you all have been trying to do something with that parcel for quite some time. So, this offers an opportunity, by including it in those boundaries, it offers an opportunity to leverage some pretty serious funds for town projects as well. Also, obviously, I'm sure this is not going to be a surprise to any of you, there are very highly visible vacancies and underutilized properties in the downtown. Um, for example, the old bank building, the Hardwick Gazette building, you know, and there are other areas as well. Um, and lastly, very, very clear to me, just walking around the times that I've been here as a pedestrian, circulation patterns are really, really confusing, so it's not only, you know, the vehicular patterns are confusing, but pedestrian patterns, bicyclist patterns, you know. So there's a need for real investment in creating accessibility and clarity in the infrastructure. And in all of the key stakeholder interviews that I've done, that has come up time and again as one of the priorities for what really needs to be done. So, I think that I have a pretty good sense of the direction we need to go in, you know, I laid out in your packet, and that packet should be available, I believe, on the Town Hardwick website after this meeting, so anyone in the audience who's interested in seeing that, ten full pages, lots of information there, so feel free to take a look at the full report there. Um, but some of the assets that you have going for you, you are a traffic and, uh, and population hub in the area, so within, you know, a twenty-three square mile radius, the highest traffic volumes go through Hardwick, go through the downtown Hardwick. Um, there are really clear visual cues that show that you are in a downtown, and that is not true across the state with every downtown. There are strong downtown businesses, there's a strong sense of community, there are great grassroots and institutional partners that are organizing and working communally, and there's a lot of collaboration going on. Challenges, confusing traffic, pedestrians, bicycle circulation patterns. Visual cues are disconnecting your downtown from Atkins Field, so I've heard a lot that there's a need for a large gathering space, but there is a large gathering space, and it is a five-minute walk. But you can't tell that because the visual cues make it look like it's far from the downtown. So, there are things that can be done there, again, with infrastructure, that can make that connection, so people understand that you do have gathering spaces in place. Yeah, you have limited town staff to be out gathering what incentives are available. I mean, just keeping track of what grants are available is really difficult, if you don't have a ton of staff to do that, a downtown organization can help to do that, and can help to leverage right grants and make sure that those, the highest priorities are being leveraged through the state as opposed to local funds, as much as is possible. And then you have some really good momentum with current projects, you've got the LVRT being connected up, so that offers an opportunity to connect to that, both for Hardwickians to be able to access downtown off the rail trail, but also for visitors to be able to do that. You have some recently purchased vacant properties, and some developers who are interested in working hand in glove with the town on goals that you have in mind. Um, you have all of the town parcels within downtown, and there is a huge influx of state funding right now through the ARPA funds. In particular, there's a giant influx of housing funds, so there's a possibility to really pull that in to make sure that you're bringing in the types of housing that you need in the community to have a full range of economic integration within downtown Hardwick. Um, and I think that's one of the reasons that there's a perception that it's low income within the village, because there is not a full range of income level price points for housing within that area. So, I think there's a missing middle that can really be addressed, and that might be something that a downtown organization can assist in planning for. So, recommendations structurally, I am recommending that we, that we expand the proposed boundaries, and I've given you a map in your memo of what the expansion would entail, but really, the reason for this is to incorporate the town-owned properties, to make continuity on both sides of the road, on key road corridors for purposes of streetscapes, wavefinding, alternative modes of transportation, and balancing any potential future development. Um, align the downtown designation boundaries with zoning district boundaries wherever possible. Um, I've worked for the City of Winuski for five and a half years, and they have a downtown, a commercial zoning district, a tax increment finance district, and all of them have different boundaries. So we constantly have property owners who are confused about, no, I want to apply for this incentive. Well, you're not in those boundaries, you're in these boundaries. And so it's really confusing for people if you don't align those as much as you possibly can. Um, and then, uh, create flexibility for the town to leverage existing resources, so the properties that you own, to access the current unprecedented funding at the state level. And I'm really thinking about it in terms of a fifty-year horizon when I look at, so while you may not be interested at present in doing something in particular at Hardwick Rescue, or at the Town Garage, or at the Police Department, um, over a fifty-year horizon, you might want to leverage some of those funds to be able to do some of those projects. So I'm really giving you the flexibility long-term by expanding the boundaries that way. Terms of recommendations for the staffing model, you know, you run a tight ship here, and it's a small lean team, I come from a small lean team in the City of Winuski, so I understand that that is always going to be a consideration. So what I would recommend is that you do staffing for the downtown organization that's a part-time executive director at ten hours a week to start, and that that's a shared staffing model with the town staff, who is currently the community development coordinator, so Tracy Martin. And I've spoken with Tracy about that, and about whether that seems like something that might work. I've also spoken with Opie about that a little bit. Um, so that would leave you not needing to raise as much funding to be able to have that downtown designation. And at the same time, what it would do is it would be, it would ensure that town efforts and downtown organization efforts were absolutely in lockstep and aligned, so you're not duplicating efforts anywhere. So there's absolute communication between the town and the downtown organization. Um, and duplicating efforts is something that you really can't afford to do when you have a lean team, so... And then, um, lastly, the recommendations, these are draft recommendations, you know, more wordsmithing to come, but the priority goals for the downtown organization, the way that I'm looking at it currently, would be fivefold. To bring state and federal funding to downtown Hardwick by writing grants and exploring other funding sources in order to capitalize on all available outside resources for Town of Hardwick priority projects. Two, improve downtown Hardwick's infrastructure by acting as an ally with the Town of Hardwick, providing energy input and staff time to address bicycle and pedestrian access, wayfinding, parking, lighting, streetscaping, accessibility, connectivity, and other infrastructure issues that may arise. Three, maintain and encourage downtown vibrancy by providing a, if you will, one-stop shop for business and property owners seeking information and technical assistance with accessing available downtown incentives. Four, address high-visibility vacancies in downtown Hardwick by leveraging available state and federal resources. And five, support downtown grant list growth to augment the local tax base. That is all I'm going to say out of that ten-page document, but I would love to take any questions that you may have.
Um, I love that the lines are adjusted to include the Creamery Road property because that is something that we are trying to replace, the Town Garage. Um, so, and Rescue does, is actively looking for a new home, so it's great. I'm wondering if you, and I think that Harvard Elementary is within the boundaries as well, but I didn't think Hazen was, or is it?
No. No, it's not, and certainly we could consider doing that. Um, one of the things that I did as part of my analysis was look at all of the twenty-three downtown designations to see what their acreage is, what their perimeter is, what the walking distance is from the furthest end to the furthest end. And Hardwick's Ask is on the lower end in terms of acreage, it's on the lower end in terms of end-to-end walk, because we will have to make the case that this is a reasonable downtown, so I think there's room for expansion if that's something that you're interested in.
I'm just, I'm not sure, I just, it struck me that...
Yeah.
That that's also a town, or a town property that, or jointly held union property, but it's, if they're, if it accesses funds, it'd be useful.
Yeah.
But there's a, it's not a continuous, really, business-wise, like, you can't go up the hill.
I'm sorry, I just missed that.
Just saying, there's a break, there's residential in the middle, and it makes it a little bit tricky according to what I've understood about expanding the designated area, but like, it stops. Right now, it currently stops at the, kind of at the, at Creamery Road, really.
Right.
And then it stops, it doesn't go all the way, it includes the library, but it comes down and stops there, it doesn't go down Church Street, for instance.
And doesn't include the Harvard Electric Building?
Uh, I don't, I think it does, maybe.
And Harvard, Harvard Carrier Health Center, or the dental center?
No, it doesn't include the dental center.
It doesn't seem like that much of a stretch to go, to include the electric department, the dental center in Hazen. But I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's worth it, I don't know if it's involved, I'm just asking a question.
I'm perfectly happy to look at it, I'm also happy to speak with Yuri Holloway at the State, the Director for the Vermont Downtown Program, and he is also on the line if he feels like jumping in, but I'm happy to talk with him about what would be reasonable and what would not, you know, I'm trying to keep it so it's within reason for the size of the community and for the traffic volumes that are coming through, and the connectivity overall, you know, basically, will it pass a sniff test as a downtown? And there are a bunch of things that I would use as that sniff test.
I would potentially include the, if Creamery Road is a part of the extension, I think it would not be a big lift to include the health center and the dentist, because there's, just in terms of economics, those are two really big employers, they're also on the LVRT, and they've been doing a lot of work on the LVRT by the parking area, I think to, like, I don't think that would be a huge addition, and I think it would also create kind of a cohesive line of businesses.
And it gives both sides of the street on those streets too, which is something you pointed out before.
And there are new sidewalks now to...
Yeah, and there are new sidewalks to take advantage of.
On one side.
On one side, you get funding for another side.
But I just want to say, Heather, this is awesome, thank you so much, and just so we kind of understand the timeline, so we've put together this report, you're presenting it now, and then we are, can you just kind of recap the timeline for when we present it to the State?
Yeah, so I will be coming back, what I'll be doing is taking the feedback that you've given me and, you know, tweaking anything that I need to, and then getting started on doing the actual strategic, five-year strategic plan, and writing the bylaws based on, you know, the overall conceptual structure here. I'll come back to you all in October with a very refined presentation to show you what those are, so that you can give a sign-off on that. Um, we'll be submitting, I, you know, the project deadline is to have this completed by the end of December, so my hope is to submit it in November.
So if we have feedback before the October meeting, when would you like that by?
You can send me feedback anytime, I think I put my email right in there, so feel free to email me directly with any, you know, if you come up with something later on that you'd like to share, please do.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that, did the bump up to the include Creamery Road, did that also go up and include the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. And that's pretty much as far as the, if you went up as far as the sidewalks go, that's kind of the Police Department on one side and Hazen on the other.
But look at it like that, where there's sidewalks, it's downtown.
Right.
And where the sidewalk is.
They're used to downtown, they, I mean...
All right, more questions? Thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you very much for the time, and it looks like we are right in the window we should be.
Yeah, beautiful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's been great working with you, Heather.
Thank you very much, it's been great working with you guys, we have a really committed team here, I mean, amazingly motivated team.
Yeah, it's good. All right, next up is item two, Slough Board to receive an update on police staffing level certifications as well as budget status, the plan, et cetera. And, uh, yeah, I saw in our packet, we had a great breakdown, that's just, I like that, concise, it's clear, this is how many people we have.
Thank Casey for that.
Okay.
Sighed about the numbers, though.
No, but we can see it.
We can.
Like, there it is.
There it is, baby.
You can contemplate it now, it was something that we've been struggling with, like, what is it? So here it is.
Here it is. So, uh, yeah, currently, the full-time patrol officers, we have Level Two, you can see it on there.
Yeah.
Two at Level Two, and then, you know, now we have, uh, one at Level Three, and then myself as well.
Yeah.
At Level Three. You know, we got Sergeant, um, five part-time officers, now this is where we're, you know, we are saving money on where it comes to benefits, retirement, um, they're not getting anything overtime with that. In addition to this, what we're trying to work with is, we know the budget's a lot tighter for labor this year, so I've worked with, I want to say Governors Highway.
State Highway Safety.
State Highway Safety, I apologize.
It's not Governors anymore?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay.
So we are supplementing our budget with, when people are out doing patrol work with those funds. Uh, when they're responding to calls, we have to go off that funding. When they're doing other police work, they have to go off that funding, so we'll try to utilize those funds. We have, well, I found out we've got twenty-three thousand dollars to use in the next two months. those funds. We have, well, I found out we've got $23,000 to use in the next two months.
Yeah.
I don't know what we're going to get, so their, their year ends October, begins October 1st.
October.
So then I have to find out how many more funds, but people haven't been utilizing them, so I have a pretty good contact there. He's willing to work with us on this to try and supplement our budget with this.
I'm sorry, I just put the AC in my ear. Do you mind just speaking of a tiny
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I was just talking about supplementing our labor.
I got it, I just, I just. I just wanted to let you know the AC's on.
We can turn it off.
But we have it.
Turn it off.
Serial number 003 on us.
So, so that's great.
That's labor. So we're supplementing our labor with the, with the State Highway with patrol.
Right, which is great.
Right.
Because it makes sense. It's a good fit, right? They want you to patrol, we want to patrol.
Right.
And you can use the money for it.
And that's $23,000?
Through, through the end of September.
Just for the next two months is what I've got.
And approximately, we don't know how much we're going to get next year, but if we don't spend this 23, we might not get more money.
23, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we don't know what the funding is for the next fiscal year, which starts on October 1?
Right, we do not.
Okay.
We don't know what they're going to give us.
Is that partly because the federal budget needs to pass?
It's federal money.
And last year, that passed in, like, March of the following year?
And it was really late.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, you know, we're going to get something. We'll utilize that a lot more than it has been utilized in the past.
And is that currently in our budget for this year, that 23,000? So that's on a revenue side that's going to help, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not in our budget at all.
Great.
So.
But our budget is already under.
I think it is. I think some of it is. Oh, no, not, not for that.
No, not the state, not the
Anyway.
Not the federal.
Not the federal, the federal funds are not in the budget at all.
Okay.
This is something that I, we've already
Yeah, so this is, this is a net help to us.
Yes.
Right. So that's kind of a strategy that we've talked about, is using these, using as much of the grant funds available
Yeah.
To subsidize the budget.
Yeah.
And with the distracted driving.
Yeah, there's three different things. There's distracted driving, there's occupant safety, and then DUI. So between those, DUI is $6,000. Distracted driving is $9,000, and then $8,000 for the occupant safety. So there's three different pools that we're taking from right now.
That's for that, that's, what totals that 23? Or this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and we have to use it with certain ways while we're out there.
Yeah.
And typically, that was only allowed to be done on overtime, so beyond the scope of a regular, beyond the scope of our regular pay, but we were able to, be able to do that on regular shift.
As part of that.
Right.
Great. And so that almost closes the gap then between?
Let's see, a 41K to gap.
Yeah.
So when you add it all?
When you add the overtime budget.
Oh, I didn't, I wasn't adding the overtime.
Plus air and salary.
That doesn't count? That's not?
That doesn't count?
Nope.
So where is that?
Two asterisks. Does not count the chief unpaid administrative.
But that's still
Well, that's what I'm saying. We got to add that.
Right, you said that's additional.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Additional cost.
Yeah, it's additional expense.
We, so
Unavoidable, I agree, but
It's an expense.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So in other areas in the budget we're saving on, we have one officer that takes health insurance and four that take the stipend. So a family plan, roughly $20,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so we budgeted for $54,000. Our actual's going to be about 40, so we're going to save about $14,000 there. So we're just kind of
Whittling away.
Whittling away.
Yeah, that's good. That's all I do.
Yep, and then
That's all we can do, right?
Right. And then with retirement, that's going to change slightly with overtime, how much overtime we pay to retirement, because it's part of your, their salary. So we're slated to save between $3,000 and $4,000 there. So we're just kind of picking away at that. I've also have our community development coordinator looking at other grant funding for things like our communications bill. So we're, we're trying to find ways to supplement, subsidize the PD with, with other funds. And I don't think that strategy's really been used in the past.
I mean, it sounds like we've got pretty, pretty close to
Edith's really quick with numbers, or
But it sounds like with that, with that, with, as Danny said, with that whittling away and with that potential revenue, but we don't really know exactly how much it's going to be.
Right.
It sounds like we're fairly close to getting, to covering that $41,000 gap, but but my concern is still that what we're paying in that paid administrative leave and how we're going to make up for that this year. Most of it was paid for, it's still the new fiscal year for that, right? So we're still
Yeah, we just, just July 1.
We were okay.
And we were okay.
We were like
Last year, we were okay.
Well, minus the Greensboro
Right.
Thing.
Right.
So, yeah, there's definitely
As long as we got it, as long as we're aware of it. I mean, we can't avoid it.
Right.
And, and then there's also potential for reaching out to other towns, which is on my slate. We've also talked with VAST, and they would like us to patrol parts of the rail trail, because they're con, they're concerned about the speeding on the rail trail with snowmobiles.
Does that mean we get to have a snowmobile?
That means VAST would pay for snowmobiles and pay us to do patrol in Hardwick and outside, potentially outside of Hardwick's boundaries.
Because Hardwick has one of the longest lines, right, on the
Yeah, that's actually, yeah.
So there's a potential for, there's, there are, are potential revenue streams out there. We just have to decide if that's something we want to go for. And, and we have, you know, we're, our staffing level is, is pretty healthy. A lot of departments aren't as healthy as we are, but with that full staffing, we can actually reach out and help other communities.
Well, I think it's amazing, considering when you, you and Mike started, we basically had two people. So I think it's incredible
Right.
How much we've built in a short period of time. That's really a testament to the two of you. Just want to make sure we can keep affording it.
I agree. I agree 100%.
But is this, so just in terms of, like, how, overall health of the department, does this, is this feeling better in terms of, as we've talked about this before, when we lost the Greensboro contract, like, what's kind of the, the perfect number for hard, for the 24/7 coverage, but then also there's this fine line of, you know, how many more do we need if we want to contract with other towns? So is, is basically five full-time plus these part-time officers, is that feeling healthy enough for the town?
That's healthy enough for the town, yes. And it's getting us the coverage that we need. Unfortunately, there's, there's a minimum staffing that you need just to run it. So adding another town in there, and, you know, if we add in speed contracts for other towns, we want to be careful what towns
Right, and how much we add.
We've, we've had, some towns have approached us, and it's just, there's no way we could cover it.
We don't want it.
We don't want to.
We could, but we don't want to.
We, we talked about that with some other smaller towns, where the, the amount of money wasn't really worth sending somebody over there for
Because you take, you know, you, you add more investigations, you add more, you know, running the roads.
We certainly can't. We got to be in the business of not losing money.
I agree. I agree.
Same thing with Woodbury. We don't mind helping out, but we can't be doing it for,
No.
We can't be doing it for free, so.
We can't, we can't.
It's the way it is. But we could be in a good situation with, you know, there are other towns that are looking for more coverage than what they're getting.
Good. Good job.
So you're going to continue to have those conversations as, as opportunities present themselves?
And, and as we get to a healthy operating capacity with solid morale and good workload, you know, we want officers in our town patrolling our roads.
Right.
And when they're ready, we can offer that service outside of our boundaries.
And so what I'm hearing is a lot of talk about maybe just contract for specific services, which is different from the previous contract with Greensboro, which was really, we'll cover your whole town 24/7.
Yeah. Every, any call for service, any alarm.
Yeah. We covered them the same as we covered Hardwick.
Very, very more service-specific contract.
Yeah. So, so you're talking about contracts that'd be like, we will do
Speed patrol.
Speed patrol for X number of hours per week for some period.
Right.
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
And it could be, could be more, but that's
It could be.
But it would be defined. It wouldn't be just blanket, we'll cover your whole town.
Right, and it could be just for, you know, July through September.
Right, is whatever they need, that kind of thing.
Whatever they need.
And what works for us, and
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a huge delivery stream, motor vehicles, stuff, you know, patrol and break-ins.
Investigations.
With investigations and such.
Yeah.
Good.
So I really appreciate having this conversation, having the numbers. It helps a lot to have just a little bit of clarity about where we're at.
Yeah, it would be great, this is maybe a conversation for Casey, but it would be really awesome, just because this is such an important part of our budget. I think it'd be great to have this when we, maybe quarterly for the next year, or just kind of an update. It's been great that we've been able to hire so many people, but I think it's nice to have these members separate from the overall report.
Yeah, if we, if we were able to look at this, for instance, when Casey brings a quarterly
Yeah.
Report, and just when we're looking at the PD, we could look and say, all right, so for that quarter, how staffed were we compared to where we want to be?
Right.
How does that look tracking forward?
We've been seeing it along, as we grow and improve here, we really see it.
Thanks for all your work.
And it could even just be this, if things haven't changed. We could keep, have this.
Yeah. Hopefully, one of these things will change.
Yes.
Soon.
Yes. Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that was what we needed. Item three is up. You're up next?
Yeah.
You, that's you? Safe Streets For All?
Yeah.
Grant and Discuss of the Town should apply for this grant.
Yeah.
Cause he volunteered.
Hell, yeah.
Oh, that's what you volunteered for last night.
Casey's on the, on the thing, but we, so I was going to do this.
Tell us what it is.
I thought I had an official Select Board report, you might put me on the agenda.
I've forgotten it, so tell me what it is.
This is a grant, planning grant for the, for safe, essentially for, focused on safe. Tracy, do you want to speak, or do you want me to?
Tracy's here, but
No, I think you're doing fine.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. So Paul, Paul, our, David, I don't know why I said Paul. Josie and I and Tracy met today, and she did an excellent job of looking into this grant, figuring out exactly what it was, and basically, recommendation is, it may not be the best fit for what we're looking to do right now.
Okay.
And the planning commission felt the same, and so did I, because it was, it was a federal grant, short deadline, like, September 15, lots of work, lots of maps, and then we really didn't have a
Project.
She, she looked into it at depth, not at depth, but more than me, and said that it really, we've had a, not a very good chance, so. So the focus is going to be on, Tracy, what was the other grant that?
So, there's a state grant program called Better Connections.
Better Connections.
Oh, yeah.
Which we went for once before and apparently just barely missed getting, and I think if we work closely with those folks to reapply, we'd have a very good chance. And we identified a couple of other potential funding sources, the PPI money that NVDA gets. If we do get to be a designated downtown, the transportation fund becomes available to us. So we have a couple of, a few other options that could help us
Yeah, it would be a $40,000.
Not necessarily going to the federal. Huge.
Right.
So it was a fairly sharp but good meeting, and Tracy's doing a really good job of, of looking for some funding.
Great.
Basically, we also hit on the
$40,000 match was kind of in, in many ways
And we all agreed that we have
Just not ready to do, you know, make it good enough.
We have a lot of projects on the table that
We do.
We need funding for, grants for, so maybe we can look into that. So, yeah, that's it.
Great.
There's another, Tracy, correct me if I get this wrong, but there's a Transportation Advisory Board
Yep.
That, that meets with, that part of NVDA.
Yeah.
And we, they don't meet very often, but we currently do not have a representative from Hartwick on that board.
No, because they don't totally talk about it with their representative from Hartwick. I didn't even know it existed.
Right.
So, but it's kind of interesting. So we're going to make sure that somebody from Hardwick is at the table.
We want a seat at the table, because we haven't gotten, we haven't benefited from these funds for 16 years.
Not since they did that traffic study, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
That we have to look at for everything, because it's the only thing we have.
Yeah.
We haven't got money from those funds for 14 years.
14.
The last was a study in 2008.
Yeah. So, tie time.
Yeah.
So that can be either somebody from the Select Board or somebody from the Planning Commission, but we're, we're definitely, we're going to push
Hardwick person.
We're going to, yeah, yeah. We want a seat at the table.
Good. Good. Just, all this talk about grants and state funding and transportation makes me think of the Transportation Alternatives Program that has funding that could work for our swing bridge, but I don't know if the timing's going to, that, those grants come out in the fall so soon, but it may not, I don't know if they'll know. Anyway, just thinking out loud, I don't know, I don't know if they'll know enough about our project if I then to
Tracy's doing a great job, which really is.
Hey, Casey, I appreciate meeting with you.
Thanks, Tracy.
You had a lot of good things to say today.
All right, and move us on. Item four, Select Board to Discuss Town-owned Cary Road property and if they're interested in selling its Kingdom Bent LLC for housing. These are folks that came
Yeah, Josh, Josh Oakley is on.
Josh is on.
Yeah.
Hi, Josh.
Did we take this off? I, would we miss item B, or?
Did I skip something?
Nope.
That was Danny.
That was me. We just did that.
That's not the agenda.
Oh, I don't have the current agenda.
Never mind. Do you have last week's agenda?
No.
Um, so we asked Casey to put this in the agenda, because we, at the end of the last meeting, we said we should just have a conversation about Cary Road in general.
Yeah.
Right.
And so that's, Casey put the field card in the packet. So do we want to do that right now, like a general conversation, or, or maybe we just come up with some questions to, I have some questions for Josh that we could email.
Yeah, so my thing is, is I think whatever we do with this property needs to be public. Whether you're a bid, or, we need to think about the property before we talk about a specific plan.
Yeah, we need to think about how we're going to
How we're going to deal with. A, are we going to sell it? How are we going to sell it? Those things.
And what's the process?
What's the process?
Is it a bid, or is it like, request for proposals, because we want to see what's Is it a bid or is it like request for proposals, cause we want to see what's gonna happen?
It's a valuable piece of real estate that we have been granted, that we should, it's gotta be in public. I don't think we can look at a project before we look at how we're gonna deal with the property first. Cause we haven't talked about it at all.
Right.
Not, not a bit, yep.
And a part of that was because there was a period of time that we had to wait.
And I'm all for sound, I'm not giving you wrong, I'm all for this project, but I think we need to
Well, that is, just to clarify for people out there, that the only reason why developers have approached the select board about this particular property is because the town owns it. Normally, if there's a developer that wants to do a project, they go to, they go through, um, Kristin zoning and permitting, and they go to the owner of the property. So not every development, developer is gonna come to the select board for this kind of stuff. I don't know that people totally understand that, but, you know, when, when this property landed in the town's
Tax sale.
Tax sale and ownership of, by the town, um, it also had, we had to wait five years. I think that back then, we were thinking maybe it was gonna be a way to expand our industrial space and um, so there've been other ideas around this property, but now we know that the biggest pressure that we have is providing additional housing, because the entire state needs more housing, and we don't have, there's nothing available. So, just, just, I just wanted to like, you know, because we don't generally talk about individual properties like this and we don't have this kind of, I've never, on the, when I've been on the select board, ever had this kind of a thing that we had to like decide about, you know? So.
Right.
That's it.
I mean, I think the big thing we, I, I think that's a really good point, Sherri, cause we aren't necessarily used to thinking about it, right? Thinking about property in this way. Um, to me, like, the most important thing is, is conditions of any kind of sale, so and we probably won't come to those tonight, but I think maybe tonight what we could do is come up with a timeline for ourselves of maybe we put together, you know, we've got the assessment, maybe we put together some, some thoughts or research, or like ask questions of Josh or Casey or whoever. But to really think about, okay, what are the, um, if we're going to sell it, I guess the, as Danny said, A, are we gonna sell it? Are we gonna think about selling it? And if we are, what are the conditions of that sale going to be? Is it going to be open for bid? Are there gonna have to be state permits ahead of time? Are there gonna have to be, are we, whatever those are? Um, but I think we have to kind of come up with those ourselves first, cause it's our own property, and then we can say, okay, Josh, you're welcome to apply, or yes, we're interested in selling this, or, you know, what, just using them as an example. Um, but it's a good way for us to think about how we wanna use this property. I think it's pushing us to make a decision about it, um, which is a good thing.
Yeah, if we're generally strategic about it, we will end up with a, a good, like, like whoever takes this property on from us, hopefully, um, actually does something, and it doesn't end up in limbo for a period of time that we're just like, you know, but, yeah.
And that could be a condition of a sale, that it has to be that X amount of the project has to be done at certain times.
Yeah, just to avoid, you know, they're much bigger projects, but, you know, to avoid having holes in the middle of our
Yep. Does it make sense, we, we all volunteer for plenty of things, but does it make sense to come up with like a small, quick and dirty carry road path force?
Of course, yeah.
So I think, I mean, I think the questions we need to decide on, we all need to be involved in. We wanna sell, if we wanna sell it, then how are we gonna sell it? Fair market value, bid, I mean, we can figure that out. We all need to decide it, I don't think it can
Well, I, I think
I don't know if we really need to do it right this second, but I think we need to decide.
But it, I agree, but I think that the idea of having a couple of people outside, like, look into it and try to put together, like, here's, here's something we could do might give us a good framework for that discussion, if people are willing to do that. Um, I mean, I think we need to sell it. I, well, I'd like to sell it. I have another opportunity, other possibility, I guess, is to lease it. Right, I kinda not that psyched about that either, but
I think we, uh
So, you could, you know, if we look at it like any real estate property, um, we need to market it. So in that request for proposal, um, what are we marketing the property for? Housing, industrial park? Like, we, I think we, like, I agree with Kaylee that we have to come up with, uh, what, we're, we need to market that property. What we wanna use it, what we would like to see it used for. I don't know, are the legality around, um, making a condition of the sale and having them
Right.
Be, you know, there's gotta be four acres of green space and, you know, the, certain lighting conditions. I don't think we can do that legally.
Things are dealt with through, uh, developer review boards.
Right, yeah, so
We basically gotta decide whether it's something we wanna sell and how we want to sell it.
Yeah.
And I would think that, I just shouldn't sell it, but I think it's gonna have to be competitive bid on fair market value type of situation. And I would think maybe with the request for, you know, have some sort of proposal along with your bid, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I think
At least it maybe, it wouldn't have to, I, I don't, I don't care about that so much, but I think some people will. I think if someone buys the property, they should be able to do anything that, within the boundaries of zoning. I mean, there's plenty of rules already.
Yeah.
I don't think we should, as a select board, tell a landowner he should do anything before he buys the property, cause there's other people that
The state certainly tells you.
Although it isn't, because we do own it, it is an opportunity, and because we think of it as one of these last sort of developable areas and it's close to
But we certainly have, I mean, we decide, so we
Right, so it's an opportunity to ask people to, to present a project like the, um, like the Kingdom Ben.
Well, the only thing is, yeah, but we don't wanna make the sale process so complicated that now we're weighing
Right.
Lowest bid against, uh, highest, uh, sympathy voter, whatever, not sympathy, but you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Feel-good project, now we're weighing feel-good against cash.
No, but you could weigh, uh, you could weigh a cash sale of the property against the cash sale plus the effect of the grand list, for example.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't matter, but I think we need to have that figured out before we sell the property.
I think it might make sense to put together a small group to figure that out, Danny. I'm happy to volunteer to do it. And I think it might be really helpful, uh, to, when we have the next conversation, to invite somebody. Uh, I happen to know somebody in my immediate family who deals with bids a lot and deals with these projects a lot. Somebody to help answer just general questions about, like, state permitting, what that means, what, like, who can just kind of be who is not necessarily somebody who's going to be bidding the project, but who can just kind of speak to
So Kristen, Kristen
Kristen knows about
Kristen knows a lot of that.
Yeah, it could be Kristen, it could be
Yeah.
Could just have a meeting.
Maybe we just invite Kristen, but, um
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's really, we, we gotta decide if we wanna sell it or not, so, all that stuff, I'll play out.
Does anybody not wanna sell it?
I guess my question is really more for the town, like, for town, like, do we need it for the road group? Do we need it for anything in the highway department? Do we need it anything for sewer? Those are my immediate questions. Like, do we need it for the PD?
Rescue expressed interest, but they
Yes, it'd be a better place to hide.
And you could look down on the, the hard electric people from there.
I think, I'd like to clean off that pile of sand.
Yeah, it's not good sand though.
It isn't?
No. Oh.
Um, it's good sand to build a factory on, that's what I'd like to see. I mean, housing's nice, but you gotta have jobs.
There's only a two inch line in the, in the, through there.
Right.
Any housing development or anything like that, you might have to go all the way back to the hardware department for order run a
four-inch main or something like that down There's issues down, yeah, yeah, there's issues down through there anyway, so.
Okay, so those are the kind of things we need to talk about.
I, that's, that's a really good
That's great.
Yeah, we really should need to know, I mean, a, a serious buyer is gonna wanna know all that
Right.
Before they purchase it.
Alright, so
Sewer wise, it would be fine because it ends right there on the other side of, uh, is that Dollar General?
Oh, yeah.
It'd be easy not to tie into, but water. Especially for housing development and stuff like that, with sprinkler systems probably and
Well, they
Right, we already got that at the Dollar General, right?
What they proposed before was
But you got all the trailers, all on that line.
Yeah.
Snack Bar Properties on that.
That's a two-inch line that goes
Is Willie on that? They on Village Water up around the corner?
Yes. Yep.
Who? Willie, Alfred Willie up around the corner, Smith, Baptist Street, are they on water?
Smith isn't.
Smith isn't.
Those other two have a plant in the other place, but they have their own two separate lines that actually run through the light department, do yard, up over the bank, their place. So then you have a two-inch line that runs through Aneers Trailer Park, and then feeds behind the snack bar and then down.
So, um
Which you couldn't upgrade that route, you'd have to go down
I like the idea of Kaylee, uh, picking this offline. Uh, with
You now have to, to tell them.
He'll help, don't worry. Might be some finger paint on this presentation.
I mean, I don't mind, if we need two of us, I don't mind
There we go.
Participate.
Any problem solved? Anybody else?
Chris, stop doing this, Danny, everybody
Yeah, they can bring it, they're gonna have to bring it. They're gonna have to bring it.
Well, Kristen
Kristen, Tom, it'll be, whatever, figure it, we can figure it out.
I'm, I'm more than happy to
Yeah, you too.
Great.
No, you
I'm always available.
Yes.
Great, there we go.
Have Tom, too.
Alright, so I'm gonna move us on, cause
Josh.
I will go.
Yeah, we can do next, I'm in Hardwick.
Okay, this one's gonna be easy, cause we're gonna table it.
Yeah.
I have a draft resolution.
I'll send it to you.
The only thing, I'll hand it out.
Sorry, we're moving on to item five, which is a cannabis, uh, con- control commission.
Um, we got
That resolution, which, yeah.
Right here, but
But
So essentially, you're saying, which I agree with, that by default, it's us, but if we wanna appoint other people, we can.
Yeah.
Good, good job.
Yeah.
Or by default, it's the select board.
Or by default.
Or, and, and then how are we going to do that? Um, should we name the areas of folks that we want on the commission?
Stakeholders?
Right.
I would just use that word.
And then, okay, so
Unless, unless somebody wants somebody specific, I don't
Do you wanna limit it just to Hardwick?
I would think.
I would think, right? That's the only jurisdiction we have.
Okay, so the problem is, is what if somebody works for like the health center and they don't live in Hardwick?
So we're talking about a cannabis, we're talking about licensing people.
We're talking about
For retail.
A, a local cannabis control board.
Right, but what that control board does is it controls retail cannabis.
Correct.
So why would it out of town, or how would that affect us? We're not gonna let it out of town.
Because stakeholders in the community?
Oh, on the commission.
Yes.
Harvard president.
Good.
Or like if somebody from PD wants to be on it, but they live in Stanor.
Right.
Well, that would be a PD representative.
So what we, so what we could do, so on some, on some things, like for example, the town manager, the town manager has to live in Hardwick unless the select board makes an exception.
Okay, yeah.
So we could do something like that. You live in Hardwick unless we make an exception.
I, I think, yeah, I think it's a hard thing. I mean, when I look at the police department and the town, you know, it's a representative of that department, not unless they're out of town, it wouldn't matter. He's a police, HBD representative. But as a citizen on this board, you should be from Hardwick if they're making Hardwick decisions.
But if you, if you're bringing special expertise, you don't have to be Hardwick citizen.
Um, like the police.
Well, the police is a
But Danny, this has got
I don't care, whatever you want.
But Danny, we have, we have to, we have to
I don't care who's on, I'm on it, so that's all.
We have to lay this out in this resolution, so it's clear, so people don't look at it in ten years and say, what would it be?
I was just voicing my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
I think we could just say, why don't we just say, leave it the way it is now, cause it's appointed by the Hardwick Select Board.
Yeah, if we don't put any parameters on it, then
Well, it's just what Eric was saying, we could say, no, you're not allowed to be on, somebody could
We want people from Hardwick, not from wherever, we could say that.
I'm all about
Or we could say, you know what, you're on the police department and we do want you on this.
So this is just saying, we, we make the decision.
I'm all about that, yeah.
Yeah.
For sure.
And then term lengths, and then, or should we have term lengths, or, and or how do we remove folks? I know, I just want
I know, you're right, but I hear people.
Um, can it just be set up sort of like the way that the, um,
Electric commissioners are?
I can do that.
There's term limits, so that
Yeah.
Do they have to be reappointed by the select board?
Yeah.
They have to show interest and be reappointed.
If they're not on the select board, they'll follow, I'll make another paragraph.
So would we then have to, would our, the only trick with that is we're all on different terms as select board members, so would we have to then match up?
No.
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 No, because the select board member is the select board member.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't know this was a life game?
Look around.
Yeah, look around.
Can't go three years.
Alright.
Just model it after the
Okay, so what, what I just wanna be clear about is I feel like that we were kind of rushed into this whole process. And I don't wanna continue to rush into this whole process.
Great. So you're gonna take that back and work on it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
You rejected, right, I hastily joined this thing. You're gonna do it, you started.
Alright, so, so that's good?
Yes.
Okay, so, excellent, thank you
Yep.
For continuing to follow up on that. Next is select board reports.
I still have one.
Even, I thought we took it away.
Well, I got, I'm just busy a little bit, we're
Alright.
Uh, we're gonna be working on Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail in the next week, and the trail up around back to the sawmill and stuff, so everyone be aware, there'll be mowing and digging and all sorts of activity.
Is this, is the log yard still going? It looks pretty empty.
Log yard is not going, no, has been. It got broke into, somebody rambled through all my stuff, made me mad, made Kenny mad, put some windows. You on it?
Sal.
Huh?
He made a report.
He made a report, yeah, Kenny Davis did, yeah.
There's a thousand dollars reward for him.
Yeah, he put up a thousand dollar reward. They just vandalized, sprayed glass, just broke some glass. They took the cover off my snowmobile, hopefully, probably gonna drain the gas tank just as a safety precaution, but, nah, just paid some taxes.
Sometimes we've talked about when properties on that rail trail or the rail bed become, when they change hands, might be a good time to reestablish that rail
Through there.
Yeah.
Well, nobody would like that to change hands more than Kenny Davis, right? I can guarantee you that. I would love to find a, a use for that property. I thought it'd be a great space for incubator space for, uh, light industry, like, you know, I would rent, like, I rent down there now and, you know, the Barclay Boys could have their wood processor there, and the welder could have his bay there, and, you know, the, the lawn care guy would have a bay, a heated bay where he could work on his
I think you should do it.
I think I wish I had the time, cause there's probably grant, Tracy's still on? But I also thought that'd be a great thing for
That's been, yes, kind of a good space. Um, sorry, back to trails again, so you're working Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail.
Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail.
Previously, you talked also about the, um, Wright Farm Road.
Wright Farm Road, as soon as RTP, as soon as Sherri gets me the green ice, we're gonna be up there.
So that could even be this year?
My hip is gonna be, is planned to be this fall.
Okay.
My hip is being replaced on the nineteenth, so that way
Of which month?
September.
Alright.
So I'll have at least a week on.
Alright.
Maybe two.
Okay.
But yeah, we may not, RTP's still
Okay. We can't start Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail, though.
Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail is
There's a go, okay, awesome. Other reports, Sherri Cornish.
Voting on Tuesday the ninth is at the townhouse.
Is a primary.
Hardwick primary polling place.
And is there
At the townhouse.
And is there still a, um, a public service announcement about justice of the peace, trying to get people organized for that?
Justice of the peace, there's
And what do you have to do for that?
Uh, visit the town website and look at the description, but
The deadline for, uh, being nominated or for putting your name forward is this Friday, so talk to Tommy.
You mean tomorrow?
No, next, sorry, next morning.
Next week, Friday. Okay, so anybody interested in justice of the peace, we're a little bit short this past year, which means we're a little short for board of civil authority because those folks serve on that, so it'd be great if anybody's interested in being justice. Plus, you can perform marriages.
Yeah, which anybody can do nowadays.
Well, yeah, yeah.
There are other benefits, too. Uh, you can count votes, you're invited to count votes at the town meeting. It's really fun.
Yeah, it's like, it's like school club.
Yeah, you get to see the inside of the firehouse some years, if you're counting votes.
And this year, you will be at the townhouse.
Woo, townhouse.
Has been decided?
Yes.
For the primary.
Primary.
For the primary, and then the general election.
General election in November.
Alright, yeah, alright, any other select board reports?
Yes, the Historic Society is presenting a program on the tenth, which I think is next Wednesday
Yes, the Historical Society is presenting a program on the tenth, which I think is next Wednesday, on how to search the newspapers online and not spend all day getting good results. Five o'clock at the depot.
What day?
Wednesday, Wednesday.
That's legit issue I have when I drive searching.
Danny needs to sign up. All right, any other select board reports? Any new business? Old business? Somebody's got a reminder down here.
Yeah, so.
He missed, he missed the communication from the audience.
Oh, oh, okay.
Look, everybody else, I was just wondering about the, what's happening with the library over here?
Yeah.
If they were ever going to have a personal vote in the town of Hardwick on that to pass the amount of money that's going to be put into it.
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question and I don't know if anybody here does.
So there was a bond vote a few years ago.
Yeah.
For the five hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
There's no scheduled bond votes, there's no scheduled votes for, to commit any more public funds.
But, but we did commit that five fifty.
Right, but that's been voted on.
Sorry, I think.
And then there was thirty-five thousand that was, that was.
ARPAs.
With the ARPA funds, that was just given to the library.
But if your, if your question is, when is that project going to get financed and get built?
Well, I don't know about building it, I don't want to see it built.
Oh, okay.
You know, a lot of people don't.
Okay.
You know, but see, there's another thing in the town. I talked to the guy that owned the newspaper here quite a while ago and I said, you know, why don't you charge two dollars a paper for the, for the newspaper here instead of a dollar and you'd sell them out in no time? I don't have a computer, so I don't know a thing that goes on in this town at all unless you come up here to talk to somebody or, or whatever. And that, that was another thing right there with him. I saw him down, down in the diner one day and I said, why don't you, why don't you get two dollars out of, out of paper, out of your papers? And, and do it, well, yeah, he says, I'll work it. Or he wasn't much workin', he just didn't do it.
Yeah.
But I think, so at our last meeting, we had a conversation about this, about the, about the library and it was decided to not, like, we're not putting any, we're just sticking with the bond that the voters already said yes to three years ago, right? Two years ago? So there's not going to be another vote that we're aware of for more money to the library.
So is there anything going on with the swinging bridge?
Good question.
Did she just come here to run salt rooms?
It sounds like you need to come see the town manager.
Yeah, you can come to my office and I'll, I'll give you a tour around town and tell, tell you what's going on. I'll be your gazette tomorrow.
All right, well, what was it? Day before yesterday, I came down, they got the bike path thing, right up through the main street.
Those.
That's about this one, I know.
Those are temporary lines.
That's going to be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Some, some old lady came out from where the co-op used to be.
That's not very nice.
No, no. Nobody over here anyway, so she, she just looked at me like that, swung her door right open.
Yeah.
And I went around her and she just stared and bleated. I'll tell you what, it's a wonder I didn't take her door right off. They don't, they just don't care.
Right.
No, no. And Spring Street is a drive.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm going to tell you that again. Sixty million miles an hour, seventy miles an hour up through there at night.
Yeah.
There was a SUV went up through first, then he must have been doing seventy and a motorcycle right behind him going up through there. There's nothing you can do, you know, to, to stop these people. They seem to know where the police are. But one thing I saw, a police officer walked through on a bike. That's a good thing right there. Park him in some of these driveway and watch him with a gun.
What kind, what kind of gun?
Well, it could have been a gun.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
We're going on to Spring Street.
That's right, I'm, I'm coming for Wayne. You're good.
Thank you for coming. All right.
Take care.
Did somebody want to talk about ARPAs disbursement under old business?
There's a memo in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, with Casey and I met to talk about how we were going to disperse the funds that we committed. So basically, we're going to treat it the same way we do appropriations. The organizations that we said yes to have from October of this year until next year to request the funds and then we're asking that they provide a report similar to the way appropriations reports are provided.
Okay, perfect.
Keeping them all the same.
Great.
That's perfect. It was simple, I thought it was great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
That's it.
That's it. All right, so I need a motion to.
Go to the executive session?
Correct.
For BSA one three one 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 three nine six.
Yeah. And so we have a motion from Danny and a second from Kaylee. Hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, oh, we should know to include the town manager and council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Are we going just right downstairs?
To council.
Downstairs.
Your office, right? All right, let's do it.